Good evening, the time is now 7:00 p.m. I'd like to call this fourth selectmen meeting to order June 14th at 7:00 p.m. And ask you please rise for the pleasure of ladies and gentlemen.
The pleasure begins to divide on the United States of America into a republic which stands one nation under God in a visible liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, now go for the roll call.
Dr. Kennedy.
All right, Kennedy. Kevin Kennedy.
Dr. Hewitt.
Item C, which is to approve the meet minutes from 5:24 to 21.
I'll make a motion to approve the meet minutes by 5:24.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public comment?
As the board may be aware, the town has participated with UConn Center for Land Use Education and Research, the Connecticut Brownfield Initiative, for the past few years. And annually, except for last year because of COVID, CLER holds a presentation event for municipalities that are extremely active. And in the mail today, I got Plainfield. And if I, would you mind if I read it? "UConn Environmental Corps Environmental Action Award presented to the town of Plainfield in recognition and appreciation of promoting brownfield redevelopment in your work with the students of the UConn Brownfield Corps. June 2020, University of Connecticut, the Environmental Corps is an education and engagement project supported by the Connecticut Brownfields Initiative, University of Connecticut, and the National Science Foundation." So we need to find someplace prominent to put that in.
Very nice, very nice. I know that's an ongoing thing, and you've been working very hard for that. I know that Eastern Bank Land Bank is also associated with it, so there's also something you've been working on on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that.
And I'm also on the advisory board for the Brownfield Initiative.
Very good. All right, thank you. Any other public comment? Mary Nunn, we go into old business of which we have none tonight. Item F1 is new business discussed and act on appointments of Don Gladling and Rob Kerr to the Northeast District Department of Health for directors as Plainfield representatives. We have a packet of information that you have been gracious enough to ask to continue on, and all we need to do at this time is to make a motion to extend their service starting 6/12/21. That's what I'm looking at, I thought there was a packet, it was actually there. Their extended dates, I think it's a two-year term. Now, they do believe it's a two-year term, so they would end up going through to June 23.
So I'll make a motion to appoint Don Gladling and Rob Kerr to the Northeast Department of Health Board of Directors beginning 6/12/21 to 6/23.
I'll second.
Motion made, sir. Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. There's a large list here for you for line item transfers on item number two. And what we're trying to do is, for the town, is to be able to move items to underfunded, things that have been overrun, and also some items we can do for one-time purchases. And that's why this list looks rather large. I had gone through it myself and asked Kelly to update the items that are there. And if you want, we can go through them one at a time. There is general index, which is the town clerk. If you take a look at the current budget, they were under, so we asked, how much money would you need to finish off the final heat part of the year? And that's why the number's there for the $6,000. Fire marshal department, we did have two people working as full-time fire marshals. One was a full-time fire marshal, one was a support person. So they were paying us hourly rate. So that's why the $15,000 was there. Supplies, buildings and grounds, we have a need for the new tractor. So recently, we had an issue with our tractor, and it is no longer functional, so we want to make sure that we can properly allocate the monies there for that. Uniforms, it's still an overrun for uniforms, that's why the contracted services for highways are 5,000. We have items for, if you take a look at the five-year capital, there are, there's a need, had been a need for a while, for HVAC systems in the town clerk's office, one in the upstairs area and one in the downstairs. And please look at those. It's basically a heater, an old heater with a not-so-old air conditioner. So we're looking to actually upgrade that properly, both upstairs and downstairs. That's why there's requests for the $14,000, to make sure we do that. There's enough money left over in this year's budget where we're looking to, you know, that we, in the coming July 1 budget, we were looking to do the HVAC system inside of this auditorium, but there's enough money left over, so we can actually do the HVAC system in the other side of the building. That's why there's a line of request here for $85,000 for that. There's also enough money in for police gas generator, and they are estimating that to be $35,000. We'd like to do the animal control roof, because that's part of the five-year capital as well. And that's, by the way, police gas generator is part of that five-year cap. The counters, the ADA complaint for the counters, we anticipated that it would come to up to as high as $4,000, but probably a lot less than that. But we do need to allocate money just in case it does cost us more. Again, that's a five-year capital item. We are looking for the likes of the railroad avenue, we did apply for a grant for that, but we may be able to do that all right now. So that's why we'd like to be able to put that in. Postage was an overrun for postage. I think we're kind of narrowing it, narrowing it down as to what really is that costs us that overrun.
It was due to COVID.
COVID.
The town clerk having, all of us were mailing stuff out during the COVID period of time.
We want to make sure that we're safe in this building and also out in the Lions Park, so the next item there is video cameras of town. We have enough, we have allocated some monies for the video cameras. We want to make sure that we're actually putting something also aiming out into the Lions Park, so that's why that number is up to $5,000 additional. Town building repair, we do a lot of repairs and have been doing so. As a matter of fact, today, we had another issue downstairs in the pool area, so we're going to be making sure we cover that cost. Not a big deal for the refuse disposal, we want to make sure we put it in there so it does balance out in the year. We've been using engineering to a great extent, and as those people who noted the items that we have in five-year capital, there's a lot of items out there. So we were using our engineering department to make sure that those are prepped and ready to go when private stuff is provisioned, which we'll talk about later on. Police supplies, we're looking at the video surveillance system in their department, so there's a need to increase for that. Dispatcher salaries, we had a, there's an overrun, there's been a lot of overtime because it's not having enough part-time dispatchers. So the full-time dispatchers have been covering, that's why there's overrun there. You see the other items of police related, vehicle expense, overtime, training, because they have three new recruits that are now starting to work, going to training, so that's why the training is in there for additional $6,500. Same thing with the uniforms, we need for them to get uniforms. They wanted to, we have just enough money to seal the parking lot as well over at the police station. Something, if we do all these five-year capitals now, it saves us money later on, I guess some of these items done. Questions I'm coming to, how you're going to be able to transfer monies from one department to another. And Kelly definitely helped out with putting all these line items together, to see that there were leftovers for the town clerk's supplies, partner retention, social security, unemployment benefits. There was a little, we overestimated on EDC salary, the video screening we weren't going to be doing for the police, maybe in the future. Health insurance was a huge savings there, and they didn't hire full-time officers for the police, which is why you see a number of $6,000 there. And then they had leftover their holiday pay and their utilities. We did have a little money left over from council buildings. We haven't utilized everything from the election of workers because we haven't needed to go out to referendums, so that's why there's a little money left over there. Same thing with supplies for the election. There was a state in Santa Gravita, vehicle of the highway, and their utilities. We didn't use anything from relocations for this year, so that's why that money is there. There was some money left over for marketing for EDC, and a little bit left over for what has popped. So you see the totals out there? I went through every line item for you, so we had a question.
I think the town building repair, if that's fully related, why doesn't that come in at full operation?
Well, there's other items, I was just giving you an example of what happened today, but there are other items that happen on a regular basis, so that's why there's been some more ones. Sometimes we get calls from other areas like that. There was one time during the year where the library needed to have the plastic glasses, so they wanted to have everybody else. So we used from town, town building repair. Cover that. There was.
I had asked you about one of the last meetings, the total transfers that you adopted to date.
Okay.
You said you would eat down.
I will get you those.
I would appreciate that.
Obviously, this is a different year because we have some issues with COVID where we haven't been able to operate certain things, so there is some money to savings there. I really don't anticipate this many things going on for, not even transfers for that upcoming year, but as we do have the monies, this might be something to help us to save for futures. I thought this might be a good idea to put the line item transfers as is and present it tonight.
Well, have you considered the money that's coming from the state? I know that we had talked about that previously.
Yep.
You mean?
Yes.
I feel like with all the line item transfers that's happened throughout the year, that it's pretty excessive, and I just, for me, I don't feel comfortable with it.
Well, you know that with the line item, with the money that is coming from the state of Connecticut, that is a different, a different allocation. Talking about American areas, yeah, we have been talking about that and trying to think of ways we can actually spend those monies since form point, for almost 1.5 million that we anticipated originally. So those monies that we're talking about, going, majority of it, they allocate, how the monies are spent, whether it goes to, you could use it for water upgrades, sewer upgrades, and broadband infrastructure upgrades. And then the other things you could utilize it for, as we spoke, the last time we talked about it, was you could use it for health and support for those people in need, whether it be directly to nonprofits, whether it's for, like you mentioned before, revolving loan funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're very carefully looking at that. As a matter of fact, we've been talking about how, a discussion tomorrow about that, with Buss and O'Neal, continuing on with their process of getting an example of how we can actually quickly get a plan for replacing those tanks, and that's a lot of money. So I think that's really how we'd like to be able to put that forward, and I think definitely by the 23rd date we're looking at. So I still appreciate anybody's input on how we want to be able to, we'd like to see how many is coming from that, but that's what that money is at, allocated for here or 24.
I guess I only have two things. The fourth one down, I think the line item is wrong. It should be 24 instead of 22, contract services, highway.
Yes, you're correct.
And then the police gas generator, that line item, where is that? Is that a new line item?
Yes.
I guess.
There's nothing budgeted there right now, so yes.
Okay. Then the only other question, this will be the last line items that we do for the year.
Yep.
And you still anticipate money going back to the general fund out of the budget?
Kelly, can you answer that one?
Yeah, our revenue line items, we have town clerk revenue, building and planning and drilling, they're all over what they anticipated for revenue. So I think there'll still be money going back.
I figured all the ones that you had, you can take it from. I think all but one, we have a lot of others still, all but the relocation.
Yes.
I had one dropped over, so.
So if we were to approve these line item transfers, it still has to go in front of the Board of Directors for their approval? So what is your pleasure at this time?
I have no problem. I'm glad we get some capital improvements done. I'll make a motion, send line item transfers in an amount of $331,530 to Board Finance for approval.
I'll second that, to send a line item transfers to the Board of Finance for approval.
And the other thing I would say, that this is definitely going to be in front of the Board of Finance for their review, and I will give the packet over to the chairperson ahead of time, so they get the time to digest all of this. Motion's been made, second. Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number three. Take what, I'd like to know, I think this is the only thing that's going to be going to executive session, so I would entertain a motion to move item number three down to actually, I remember, after, we've done after, I remember seven.
So make it number eight, move it to number eight.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to move line item three to line item, item number eight, to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number four is to discuss an act on maintenance equipment purchase, you'll see the packet of item four. We've been struggling with what we have for beam mower, and it's been, clutch has been replaced, and this time the clutch actually worked up. We're at this time looking to do something different, and we're behind. So we did ask three of the companies to come back with something they had to offer. You can see the three in the packet. And this is one of those where you put everything together and try to measure out what is an appropriate item. I have worked with some of these pieces of equipment before. The last two that are from Bays, I wouldn't utilize. Had some problems with them, tremendous problems in the past. And so definitely use the two, one from United Ag and one from K&amp;H. And the one that I would say from, we currently have a John Deere product, I would say that the best thing to do is to stay with John Deere. Page three of their quote, of John Deere's, is 12,998.50, which came in about $334 plus than the other one, so definitely the one I would say we should be going with. We did, as we did, is already, I need, we already went out to purchase the app, G辽 items, so I just look for approval to go forward. We are way behind in that.
Is that the big one for years, Kevin?
Yeah.
This is, this is the same mower, as on the first.
Yes, but you'll notice on the second.
They've given us a discount.
Discount and the back.
Right on. Okay.
I mean, it's a question of is it emergency or non-emergency, or we could justify a little bit, which we did, but we really need to get going right now, so.
And they have this installed?
Yep. So I would ask for a motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere for an amount of $12,998.50.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so the next one's item number five. Item number five is discuss and approve a conditional commitment to the fund of bridge number 108, which is on the state of Connecticut's list for the Dow Road overlay for it. Total cost we estimated before was about $700,000. Put the application in, it's a matching, so that means that the town has to come up with whatever else on the side of that is. And they actually put up $350,000. So again, this is a project for the road repairs, it needs to be done, it's something that we'll again have to bring in front of Board Finance, and I would request that Board Finance would understand that this is something coming out of our general fund, so take out of the fund balance. It doesn't mean that the entire project ends up being $700,000. If it comes underneath that, then we're just matching, applying by two, matching whatever that is. But the request should come forward to the Board Finance to expand up to $350,000. And we've been in a few positive things lately, so that's one of them. You see the packet I gave you today, listing out some of the things, emails going back and forth, and so you see the application that's there, and some of the pictures of the actual bridge, and what is needed to be done. So all we can approve the project, we still have to go through the process and the processes to approve pending the approval from the Board of Finance, but because it's $350,000, it then has to come out of the general fund and needs, and requires a town meeting to go to referendum. So we can still possibly do this within a month, but it would be very tight. I know that the Board of Finance is meeting Wednesday night.
But do we know definitely it's $350,000? Because we don't know what the total cost of the bridge and all.
Mary Nunn, numbers together for us.
It's a $700,000 total project cost, and it's a 50-50 matching share grant, so the town has to come up with a maximum of $350,000. If the total project cost is indeed 700, then yes, the town would have to come up with $350,000.
So what happens if, once they start that project, and they run into a snap, like they get on the other bridge, does that, will there be any additional cost to that?
If something like that happens, and it does increase the cost, we will have to go back to DOT.
You would have to go back to DOT for a while?
For additional money, for them to approve the overrun.
Does the town then incur the cost at that point for?
Whatever the overrun is, this is a 50-50 match.
So anything is split?
So the town would incur in the 50% of whatever that overrun is also.
As long as we know that upfront, it does make it a little easier to understand how the process works. Is there in-kind services from the town that could be implied?
Yep.
So we can have some of the highway group doing some of the backup, or?
Absolutely, yeah.
This is on the capital program?
This is one of those items that have been on the capital program, yes.
Long time.
It's been around for a couple of years now, but I think needs.
Since.
Two?
Or better, longer than that.
2008 it was first.
Oh, yes.
That's been in need for years.
We always do the same thing, we push it out to the back, and then eventually, eventually it is done.
I have a question, do you have any other bridges that are already deep?
Not, not in this condition, though.
This is pretty much the worst one we have?
Yeah.
This is the worst one.
I mean, it looks pretty bad.
Yeah, the state of Connecticut raised them, and they have a list, and that's why they give you the number 108, 108 years. So they raised them out, and this was the one that they'd been raising for a while, but obviously it's something we can hope to repair and.
Actually, DOT was ready to shut it down.
So tonight, we're really just looking for the commitment to it, and then again.
And then once we hit there, are committed to it, then we have to go to Board Finance for it, and then the town's to do it.
So without reading into this, is it going to be constructed about the same way that it is now?
I don't know what the construction is now, frankly. I do know that they're going to be replacing the superstructure, hopefully the abutments will not be scour critical, and they can just be repaired as opposed to replaced.
Okay, because it does show damage to those too.
Yeah.
So I will make a motion to approve the commitment to the bridge for Dow Road or the Latrue, to go to the Board Finance for approval, and then to a town representative.
My second.
Any other discussion? Mary Nunn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then the next thing that came forward is open space. Discuss an act on open space purchase and set a date for a town meeting. What we have been, in front of us, is an opportunity to utilize, I think we have an account for open spaces, something in the vicinity of 400-plus thousand. And then what we'd like to do is be able to talk about this briefly, but.
Any dollar amounts for purchases? Right now, the contracts are not finalized yet, they're not fully executed, so executive session will be in order to that.
But I just wanted you to be aware of what we're, item number two, we're going to executive session on. And we could put this aside, item number nine, make a motion to entertain discussion and move item number six over to item number nine, go over to executive session.
Make that motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll discuss item number seven, review and charter revision commission draft report, and this is, we were going to set up a selectmen public meeting, and. So the charter revision commission members, there are some here tonight, thank you very much for your work. You'll see that what we put down hasn't changed really that much from before. There is items discussed and shall be dated in a town meeting, change, take place after the audit reports finished, no later than in February. All of these, by the way, are in front of right now, in front of the town turn, just a little word, a little verbiage, and make sure that the processes will tie out. The next one up, we shall look at the percentage of eligible electors casting ballots that are going to be changed from 25% to 10%. Do you have the full verbiage on this shall?
The third one?
The third one up, because I don't think I copied it properly.
The capital budget?
Yeah.
Yes. Shall be provided as a question. Oh, I have a copy.
Well, nevermind. Thank you.
It's a long one.
The capital item, the three was section 2-4B. Capital budget shall be provided as a question to approve or reject as part of any town budget referendum or town budget meeting. Only if rejected, shall it be subject to a revision and subsequent validating procedures as stated in subsection B of this section. It does have some meaning, so the capital budget should have a vote for it to say yea or nay with meaning. We talked about this on a regular basis, how the capital items for five-year capital is discussed, we talk about it, but if we don't have it on that list, it makes it difficult to go for grants or applications for different items that we want to do. So that's why it should have some value to a capital budget voting, so that's why that was suggested change. Item number four, which is section 25B, shall the dollar amounts of non-budget appropriations be updated from $10,000 to $50,000 minimum, and from $50,000 to $100,000 maximum before a town meeting is needed? Again, changing with the times, that was probably originally designated in 1984, so the number seems to be adjusted. 25D shall the minimum dollar value of shared grants. Two five D shall the minimum dollar value of shared grants be increased from ten to fifty thousand before a town meeting is needed? I can't think of a lot of grants that would be, under ten grand, so that's why at least fifteen grand would be appropriate. Item number three, four shall changes to the voting districts and polling places for each vote be determined upon recommendation by the registrars by the board of select. The current town talks about the changes, but the state doesn't. So this really is clarification as to who makes that, if you're going to change voting districts. The next one up is four one D, shall the board of finance increase from a regular members from six to seven? And right now, every other board of committee has an odd number on it. So that way, when it comes down to a final vote, it makes it easy. So if everybody votes, you've got, you've got a casting ballot, which makes that appropriate right now. Or if you had on the board of finance of three to three, you have an impasse and have to recast ballots. Item nine two, it's the last one, shall appointments to the position of financial be modified to include staff in laws and partners? And that's the ones that were recommended by the board. Now, this would be something that we would put discussion on at a board of select and public hearing for the charter revision. So we could put these forward to the public, see what they have to say and make recommendations and modifications as we see. I think you've had two public hearings so far. And I think the first one had three or four people at it and the second one had. And it's, it's too bad. I mean, these are, these are, some actually pretty good requests of changes.
There's nothing, I don't think there's anything real radical in here, but they're like housekeeping things.
Some of them.
That are really going to be helpful, especially save money on referendums and, you know.
We had a calendar that was also something you used before.
The calendar? We put down June twenty-third for the public hearing with the BO S. Probably six-thirty, usually our meetings were six-thirty.
So if you, if you approve, just make a motion to make a, this would be for board of select and public hearing for charter revision on twenty-third and sixth Thursday.
I'll make that motion.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We've moved three down to eight and we've moved six down to nine, so we'll entertain a motion at this time to go into executive session and include both our town attorney and our finance director into that meeting. And we will be meeting to discuss a tentative agreement and also a discussion and act on the, a discussion only on the open space purchase because it was in dollar value. We really shouldn't be discussing that public or to ask for a motion for both items, number down eight and nine, sort of executive session with, with our attorney and our finance director.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session with our attorney and our finance director for item number eight and number nine.
And all in favor, say aye. Time we're now going to executive session and it's seven thirty-four. All right, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session with no action taken at eight eleven.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we've moved item number three down to item number eight. So at this time, we can consider an act on a tentative agreement between town planning and local agency for collective bargaining agreements covering the period of July one twenty twenty through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
I'll make that motion.
Need to read that one?
It's okay.
Okay, second.
Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The last one was item number nine, which we moved from six. We were discussing an act on an open space purchase. We don't have to set a town meeting date at this time, but to approve and go forward to the next board, we would need to entertain a motion to approve the plan for open space purchase.
I'll make a motion that we approve plan for open space purchase and move it on to the next board.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we're down to other? Any other comment? We open the floor for public. Any other comments or questions?
I have a question. About the auditors, any update?
I did have that. I sent the whole file by one of those to the attorney that had, I can't get him back. I will follow that up with him tomorrow. And Kathy and I will use something for tomorrow as well for the plan of transition. Okay, let me do that. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing not all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and time is now eight thirteen. Thank you.